Good afternoon, and everyone, it is 4:30. Welcome to this meeting of the council. I'd like to begin by standing for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if we can have a roll call, please.
Brad Hent.
Here.
Wayne Barahona.
Here.
Ken Snyder.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
Here.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Good. Moving on then to the approval of the agenda.
I make the motion to approve.
Support?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Snyder.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Ken.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right. Now into the public forum portion of our meeting. Is there anyone that would like to address the council at this time in the room? Anybody happen to be listening in by Zoom that might want to address the council? It appears that there are not, so we will move on then to the consent agenda. I'll take a motion to approve that.
We accept the consent agenda.
And I will support that.
All right. Any discussion there? Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Ken.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Right. Justin, you have that Kevin Miller is the SCAD appointee coming back. Glad to have him, so. Very good. All right, let's move on then to item 6A. First reading of the ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Sheldon, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to prohibited parking. This referring to parking along Highway 18. Congressman Sam.
Yes. This is a request from our chief of police. He's not able to be at the meeting today, but Todd and I have both been involved in this, so if you have questions, either of us can help. Fairly straightforward request.
Are we able to waive second and third?
We are, and that would be my request.
I move that we accept the ordinance as written and waive second and third readings.
Aye, second. Okay. Any further discussion? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Ken.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
So that's all we really need to do now, correct? Okay, let's move on then to item B there, a resolution approving the application for the annexation of Trade Winds Apartments property out on just west across the road from NCC.
Run 7A first. Jenkinson Annexation first.
Oh, okay. What did we just? That's right. Okay, yeah, let's back up one step to A. Move on to the resolution approving the application for the annexation of the Jenkinson property. We'll do that one first. And the city's Eastside Water property out there southeast part of town. Exclamation of comments here?
This was part of an agreement that was signed in late 2016, and the petition for annexation, for voluntary annexation, was submitted by the Jenkinson family this spring, and this is, I believe, the last step prior to filing. Correct, Micah?
Yeah.
So if you approve this, we file with various governmental entities, and because this is 100% voluntary, that seals the deal.
All right. Any questions?
I'll make motion to approve the application as presented.
Support. One last time for comments or questions. Roll call, please.
Snyder.
Aye.
Ken.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right, in that same vein, moving on to item B there now, the Trade Winds Apartment property, approving a resolution for that to be annexed in to the city. Same song, second verse.
Mm-hmm.
Also voluntary. Okay. Any other questions? And I will entertain a motion for that then.
I move you accept.
Support. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Ken.
Aye.
All right. Moving on then to item 8A, a report from our general manager of the Crossroads Pavilion. Tricia Meiring, welcome. Good to see you.
Nice to see you all. Trying to get out of here pretty quick.
Well, that depends.
We'll see about that now, won't we? No, I'm just teasing. So Sam had asked that I come and give a report from the pavilion, since it's been a little over a year since we provided you with some statistics and whatnot. So even though it's six pages, I gave you copies of that. I will email it to Sam as well, so he can tag that in TownCloud. Really what I want to focus on is 2020 going forward, so the rest is your reading pleasure. So, thank you for having me. On page two, when we look into 2020, we had 146 booked events, but as you know, COVID reared its ugly head, and when it was all said and done, we actually held 98. We were closed a total of 10 full weeks, even though there were some slower weeks within the early and latter months of the year. Had we not had COVID, I think we would just continue to build on the momentum that we had. Of those 41, six were weddings, the rest were like your corporate social. The holidays really took an effect on us in December, so that's when we did a lot of our spring cleaning and the winter, preparing for this 2021 calendar year. So even with COVID, we did phenomenal. Now, year-to-date, we have 168 booked events so far, and that's, what are we, eight months? We have four months to go. It's, we're really busy out there. If you don't have the chance to drive by and see the parking lot from time to time, you may not know just what all takes place and how busy things are. We did have four cancellations this year. Two were related to COVID in the beginning. One is a military reason, and one is a medical reason. I want to go slow. But with our 2021 rentals, we continue to book the corporate social, and now that summer's slowing down, we'll start to see more of those pick up. They tend to slow down in summer when weddings pick up, so it's kind of a give-and-take with our calendar and whatnot. Pages three and four are just pretty visuals of graphics to give you an idea. Our past president, Kevin Kane, loved graphics, so we just kept them in there. And the reason you're getting six pages is, this was prepared a year and a half ago, and I didn't want to reinvent the wheel, so I just keep adding to it. So next time, I'll try to shave off some of the old and focus more on the new. But it gives you the history of where we're at. Page five is just the key features that we hear often. Our location, the accommodations where our forefathers did a good job in planning of what that area could be and has become, and is continuing to develop. We're really excited whenever the next hotel can happen. Many of our future bookings are asking when that'll take place, and I just tell them, "It will in time," just can't give a date. We did have a wedding at one point where not one person was from Sheldon or the area. The bride was from eastern Iowa. I gotta get my directions right. The groom was from somewhere in North Dakota. This was a happy medium place. They worked in northern Minnesota, and all of their guests were from out of town, and they spent three days in our community, shopping, swimming at the pool, eating at the restaurants, buying gas, just hanging out. One of the evenings, they just hung out in the backyard of the pavilion and had a family gathering. So we draw from all over the United States, as far as, I shouldn't say the United States, but really the Midwest, with those who sign the agreement. And we've had people from all over the world with some of our events that we had, which is kind of neat to hear some of the weddings, say where the people come from. Let's see, our staff, right now we have two full-time, 18 active part-time. We've got someone are inactive. There are college people that go back to school, and a couple that go back to work full-time that are not able to help. We will be seeking to hire some more, because when you look at our manager's notes on the last page, it's been a really busy year. There's, most of our weddings in May through September are back-to-back, meaning we have a Friday, Saturday. But there are times where we have a Friday, Saturday, Sunday event, and it can put a lot on what we have, so we're trying to build our roster more. So it may, we may have 30-some employees, but that's just to help with the demand, so that some of our kids can't work super late. Labor Day, we're planning this Sheldon Festival of Brews. I guess it's in the newspaper. I haven't read that yet. But if you don't have plans Sunday, come on out and check out our Sheldon Festival of Brews. We're continuing to plan hosted events, such as the bridal fair in November. And just something to point out, fiscal year, it may be possible for fiscal year 22, '23, we may come to you and ask for a third regular, part-time person, because the records show that we're growing, and we may need additional help in that area. In 2022, then, looking forward, because I'll wrap this up, so you guys can maybe be done in record time, September 2nd will be our five-year anniversary. That will fall around Labor Day weekend. That's also Sheldon's 150th. So we've been working with Chantel on some of the festivities that will take place, and we'd like to do a super big event that Friday night, whether it's a concert or an outdoor picnic concert. We're still in the works of figuring what that would look like. Weddings are filling up. I have one correction. We do have 40 bookings, not 33, and that does not count any of our hosted events, like Chef Suzanne, who's there every month, our bridal fairs, the anniversary parties, et cetera. Capital Improvement Plan, we pushed those off. Hopefully, we'll be looking last fiscal year, so hopefully, we'll be looking to do a few things this year. And then, we're very grateful for the tax, the civic tax levy, because being open four years, we're having a lot of wear and tear on our equipment, and we're going to start to put together a plan on when and how to replace some of those things. Hopefully, planning it and being a little more proactive rather than reactive. So, for your reading pleasure, you have a paper copy. I will email a PDF to Sam, so he can tag it in the TownCloud, and do you have any questions? Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions for you.
I tried.
I know.
Yes.
I haven't got them out yet, so you can still leave.
Okay, yes.
No, a couple of things is, sort of looks like our rebound from COVID has been good.
Very good.
And I'm assuming, well, there are some rebookings that fell out last year that fell back into this year.
Seven. Seven that had to reschedule from last year, rescheduled into this year.
Okay. The other question I had was, is that there was an effort early on on Friends of the Pavilion.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any update on any synergies along those lines?
Yes and no. There, we have recently talked with some of our new members that have come on board. Bill Boskeljohn has joined us, as well as Dustin Remy. And at our last board meeting, we talked briefly about having some of those join up with that special events committee that we have, and form that more so into our Friends of the Pavilion. It's there, but my focus has not been there so much, as we're just trying to maintain with what we have.
Yeah, you got a lot of growth. I understand that.
Right. But our goal is to, we had a special events committee for a little while, and build on that into the Friends of the Pavilion, so that we can plan better for the hosted events that we want. So we don't need to come to the city to ask for payment for things that are coming up, and we can kind of plan some of our own things with our own seed money.
Well, thanks for the update on that. I appreciate that.
Sure.
And before you go, I have something to say.
Yes.
As the duly-appointed council representative to the Pavilion Board, I just want to take the time to publicly thank Tricia for the great job she's done. It's been truly phenomenal seeing just not only how you manage the board, but how you manage the space and how you manage those who go through it. I know you've been, as been privy to some of these board meetings, that you've been, you've had a lot of challenges thrown your way, and not only have you survived them, but you've thrived through them, so. And then, just kind of want to put this out there for everyone who at the beginning said that this thing will never cash flow, and it's going to be, I believe, it was going to be an anchor around our necks, I believe was the direct quote, when we first proposed this idea at the Pavilion. I just want to say thank you for proving all the naysayers wrong, and look forward to our continued partnership as we move forward.
Thank you. And I will add to that, that it's not just me. We have a phenomenal staff. We get compliments, letters of thanks, all the time, and, you know, you'd like to share them, but we don't like to toot our own horn. We just want to do our job and go home. Wake up the next day and go back.
I, too, would like to chime in on that same note, and it's been really exciting to see the progress that that facility has made, and it's exciting to realize that there were a lot of people that were very skeptical in the beginning, and now it's absolutely a home run.
Yep. It is good for the community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
At the end of the year, it will be paid off.
Isn't that even better?
That's the plan, yes.
So I would have liked to have said that, but I wasn't quite sure if that's the plan, so.
Yep, that's the plan.
So now we can toot our own horn, so. Good job. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. All right, we move into City Manager Report. Sam, anything from you?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, the rest of my report speaks for itself, but I wanted to briefly mention the letter from the garbage haulers that's linked to the City Manager section, and the tonnage report that I linked going back the last 14 years. I linked the tonnage report just today, so you might have to hit refresh in your browser for that to show up, but not asking for action today. I do plan, or would like to add it to the next agenda for consideration. There's been some reports in the media already, so we have had some feedback that came in today. I think it is important to know, as we move forward with this discussion, that the, for curbside recycling, the items do not necessarily need to fit into the container. Now, obviously, that's a concern, you know, when you have snowstorms or heavy winds, et cetera. But for cardboard, obviously, cardboard isn't going to fit into those containers, but you can stack them up and set them neatly next, and they will be picked up. I've done that myself. So that's something to know as we move forward. So regardless of how this turns out, I appreciate the haulers coming up with the idea. There's downsides and positives to the discussion, so we'll see how that plays out in a few weeks. I'll stand for questions.
I guess I would like to know if there's a way that we can try and engage the pulse of our community to say, what roadblocks, or what prohibits you as a citizen from utilizing the curbside recycling services, if you do not already? You know, and I've talked with the haulers about this, too. You know, is it confusion on pickup times and bates? Is it a lack of convenience, when maybe you just either have the stuff down, you know, they have the recycling container downtown, or you just really don't care? I know that this has been, this has been something we've been after, as far as improving our recycling rates as a town, we've had for the last decade. And the recycling container has been a good step in that direction, but as we all know, this thing has been used and abused, and has turned into essentially a regional recycling center, when it was really meant to just help benefit our community as far as helping aid in the recycling. So what is it? Why are these numbers not where they could or should be in comparison to the, you know, like the solid waste tonnage that we're looking at on the top line? I mean, I know there's no one answer, but how do we, how do we break that barrier? How do we get, how can we drill down that data to, you know, to see what the reasoning is and fix it?
And before we drill down into the answers to the problem, it's important to define the problem. I think that the problem can be defined in the three answers. One is what you just said with the regional recycling center. Number two is, is that because of last year and all the shipping that was occurring, the cardboard just went out of sight. Number three is that Love Inc. did a wonderful service for us, and they would haul this cardboard to Mason City, and the recipient in Mason City was no longer paid off to ship it there, and then they did shift to paper recycling. And in terms of space and volume in the box, it's the cardboard that takes the most space, right? So those are the, those are the main, the main factors. And I think also, commercial recycling is a factor, too.
Sure.
There are some, you know, one of the haulers just messaged me this afternoon and said, just because of the discussion that's happened just in the last few days, he's had two downtown businesses reach out to him to, I don't, I shouldn't say they're downtown. He's had two businesses reach out to him, asking to set up recycling containers at their business, which is a positive.
And we went through something similar to that, because we, my business, you know, gets a lot of goods shipped in, and we had run into the same thing when the Love Inc. trailer closed. And we, too, were doing the bring this stuff to the deal, to the recycling container, and I actually talked to our hauler, who said, "Well, you know, Wayne, you have this dumpster here already. We can just say, you know, you just call us and say, all right, this time I'm hauling trash, next time I'm hauling cardboard, and we'll haul it away for you." And that's just been, I mean, like, it doesn't take much for us to fill up a dumpster full of cardboard. So that's been really nice, that the haulers are affording us this opportunity. I had a citizen mention that they had thought, upon moving here initially, that the, remember those blue recycling containers, that that was the only approved container for recycling pickup? So they felt a little discouraged by a smaller, whatever, 15, 20-gallon container that that is, as opposed to a larger flip-top, like what our more conventional cans are, and they said that, once they had received the input from the haulers, that the regular-sized containers could be used, they said that they over-doubled their amount of recycling.
You know, I think there's two parts to the conversation, and education is one, and I would say that, as we've been trying to formulate our opinion on what recycling looks, should look like for the city, from the council's position, I would say that we probably overall have not done a good, a good job of educating the public on what their options are. And it might be good for us to look at maybe doing some education upfront on this, so that people understand what their options are, and then we can get into the opinions, once everyone understands what those options might be. Because I'm afraid if we get ahead of the education part of it, then we may end up making a wrong decision.
Well.
Just because the population doesn't really understand.
Well, and I guess I can get behind that, but you've got, you know, you publish it in the pace, in the newspaper. Sam's done a great job with including that literature inside of the utility bills. And then, we've got, obviously, the meetings that are published here that we do, and then the stuff online as well. I mean, at some point, the onus has to fall on the citizen.
Well, I understand that, but to date, there's still people who don't understand that they can put their large cardboard next to their recycling container. And I can't say I've ever told anybody they could do that, to be honest with you. I was one who didn't realize you could do that. So that's why I went down to the, down to the container down here. Now I won't need to, okay? So it took care of my issue, just because I finally knew that I needed to do it.
Right.
So, or I had the option to do it. I would not be surprised if there isn't a couple more people like me out there.
Oh, I agree with that.
Who don't understand what those options are. And I think if we are, can just do some simple education, then we'll see where we're at. I had someone approach me today, was concerned about the fact that we might be considering removing it at some point for temporarily or permanently or whatever, and expressed concern that, he knew a lot of people that were, that didn't live in Sheldon, that brought their recycling to that container, and.
What are they going to do?
And, and that was his concern, is that they, they were concerned enough to bring it here, and he would, didn't want to see that stop. And I said, "That's, I understand, and that's something to consider," but the other part is, there are some people that say, "Why should we shoulder that cost?" And that's the other side of the story. And I explained to him, I said, "The stuff is never easy to decide, but there's always another side."
Have the haulers complained about other stuff in there? I've been there a few times, and there's been garbage put in. Has that, has that been, any complaint on their part, or what did you consider? You know, when you had the Love Inc. cardboard trailer, you knew you just took cardboard and paper there. But then, when you mix it all together, how do you separate it out of that container? And then, if there's garbage in there, that really messes it up.
They sorted out at the, they dump it at the landfill, and then it ends up going to Lamar's to get sorted out. So at that point, somewhere in the two points, they pull the garbage out, which happens a lot. Not in our community, from other communities in northwest Iowa. It's a common problem. Sam, you want to comment?
And one of the things that Todd and I had said, had said to the haulers, is that removal without a plan probably isn't going to work, but removal with a plan is definitely worth discussing. And when you look at the points of their plan that are, that are linked, you know, we have a role, too. I have a role to help get the word out also. But number, I really like number four, them visiting with commercial businesses regarding offering those services. And one of the haulers messaged me just today, said, "Sam, you know, like I said, you know, there's two that just, just today have signed up for it." So that's a, that's positive. And one of, you know, this is all, one of the reasons this is coming up, is because we have the contracts up next year. And, and, you know, I mentioned this to them in our conversations, that this is something that we need to look at, and ask them for, ask them for ideas. And the question back to me was, is, well, we can come up with some ideas, but what is your idea? And I said, "Well, it's up to me." And one of my ideas would be, if we want to keep, if we want to keep the container, if we want to keep the container there, then let the haulers, you know, split the cost, and go ahead and keep it there. And then, we would, we would also have to work out the placement of it, because the police department has expressed concern. Doesn't happen, happen all the time, but there's been times where it's hard to get in, because the driveway is blocked. So we'd have to make a small investment to maybe do some painting of lines there, et cetera, and better signage. But then, we're really asking the haulers to, in a sense, to support regional recycling, right? Because that's been one of the three items that, one of the three items, concerns that have been brought up so far in the discussion. So, anyway, there's, there's some other variations of that idea, like, for example, you know, each, you know, we have, each hauler takes care of one container, and they're put in other, in other places. Right now, we have just one container that's owned by the city. But, anyway, they, they worked together and came up with this idea, and, you know, it's intentionally being slow-walked. We got the letter last week, put it on today's agenda for initial discussion, and we have two full weeks for comments and consideration.
Anyone else? Todd, have you ever seen where we have to put a handful of quarters in to make a deposit or recycling, something like, you know, kind of like going to the car wash, credit card?
I have not.
That'd be the thing. So, all right. If there are no further comments, then, anything else from you, Sam? Todd, then, do you have any comments?
I do. Over the next few council meetings, I'd like to spend some time talking about water, current needs and future needs. So today, I'm just going to bring up two quick topics. Number one is our current water usage and our water watch situation. The rainfall we've had has helped dramatically, as far as it's brought consumption down. What it still hasn't done is replenished our pits, our rivers, our, our things that feed our aquafur and, and, and bring our supply back. So, with that said, it, I think it's in our best interest to continue on the water watch, try to, try to keep monitoring, hopefully keep flows down, and, um, we'll likely have to stay that way through the winter. That's just, uh, the, what I feel now. So, any questions on that? Um, the next thing I want to do then is maybe give everybody a little update on, uh, where the Lewis and Clark project is at. Construction-wise, right now, they're installing pipeline between, uh, Beersford and Sioux Center. Uh, a couple of sections are actually in, and, uh, uh, some of it, uh, some of the last stuff was supposed to be finished tomorrow. I think the last piece of pipe between Sioux Center and Beersford was supposed to go in the ground tomorrow, so they'll be working towards, uh, filling, disinfection, and, um, getting that pipeline ready for use at a later date. Uh, there is a water tower needed, uh, at Beersford, uh, before Sheldon, Sioux Center, and Hall can receive water. That water tower is under construction. The, uh, structure, it's a cement structure that holds the bowl up in the air, is actually built. Um, they hope to start constructing the, uh, the actual tank yet this fall, uh, and then they'll paint it next spring, and then erect it up on top of the structure, um, next spring. So that, that project is coming along nicely. Uh, I believe that is a two and a half million gallon water tower, um, southeast of Beersford a little ways. Um, anyway, the Sioux Center and Hall meter buildings are under construction, and both of those two communities are expected to be hooked up and receiving Lewis and Clark water, uh, in 2023, probably late 2023. Uh, the Sheldon Water Tower, the water tower that is, uh, three miles, going to be three miles west of town, uh, ground is purchased and closed upon for that tower. Um, subgrade, uh, checking has been done. That project is out for bid. We, uh, Lewis and Clark opened bids on the Sheldon Water Tower on September 21st. Um, assuming we award those bids, that is a two-year construction time, so there'll be a water tower going up in between that. That tower will service Sheldon, and when the pumps are off, it'll backfeed and also service Hall. Uh, so moving forward with that. Easement acquisition, uh, uh, our land agents, uh, Lewis and Clark's land agents are in the process of acquiring easements between Hall and Sheldon. Uh, it's my understanding of, as of last week, thirteen of the needed easements are already acquired. They got a little ways to go, but they are, are working on, uh, easements in between the two. Uh, funding-wise, the, the fiscal year, uh, twenty-two, the federal fiscal year twenty-two budget has a proposed, uh, thirty-one point one-three million in it for Lewis and Clark. Uh, that's up about fourteen million from what Lewis and Clark received last year. Obviously, that's not a guarantee, it's a proposed in the budget, uh, but it's nice to see a number that big. Uh, infrastructure bill, I don't know if you've heard about the infrastructure bill and what it could be for Lewis and Clark, uh, but the infrastructure bill has a billion dollars in it, one billion dollars in it, uh, for Bureau of Reclamation water projects. Lewis and Clark receives its funding from the Bureau of, of Reclamation. Uh, the Bureau has stated that if the one billion dollar, um, water project portion of the infrastructure bill is passed, that they intend on, uh, giving one hundred and thirty-two million dollars of that to Lewis and Clark. That one hundred and thirty-two million dollars is enough to finish the authorized project. So, that would, uh, accelerate timeframes on finishing the, the authorized forty-five million gallon a day project. It's, uh, our understanding that that infrastructure bill has bipartisan support, and is it expected to pass. Uh, most recent news that I have heard is that it will likely be voted upon prior to the end of September. Uh, that is also subject to change, but that's what we're currently hearing from, uh, our lobbyists in, uh, DC. Uh, Sheldon, Sheldon is still scheduled to receive Lewis and Clark water in 2024. Uh, our daily allocation, once we are hooked up, will be one point three million gallons a day, and, uh, water department staff, Sheldon Water Department staff and myself, uh, will be meeting with engineers here over the next few months to, uh, start discussing, uh, blending options, uh, disinfection options, um, so that we can give you folks some, uh, educated material so that when we select a blend, um, there's gonna be an option of blending some water. Exactly how we're gonna do that, I don't know yet today, but, uh, these folks will, will help us through with some of that. So, that's the, uh, that's the update on Lewis and Clark. Uh, at the next meeting, I anticipate to, uh, having a, um, expansion agreement for you guys to consider and will discuss, um, and then hopefully, yet this fall, we can make some decisions on whether or not, uh, we as a city want to invest into more Lewis and Clark water at a future date. With that, I'll stand for questions at this point, if you have any.
Todd, on that, uh, infrastructure bill of the one hundred and thirty-one million...
Uh-huh.
I know the state of Minnesota prepaid their share of the federal government. Will any of that money have to be repaid back to Minnesota before they start and finish the project?
No, what, um, so, state of Minnesota put in, uh, forty-four million prepaid, uh, state of Iowa has like seven million, and state of South Dakota like eight and a half, nine million. What we have promised all three states is that there, uh, we, we will first hook all members up with the, with the money. After all members are hooked up, we will then pay back the states. Then there's some deferred projects that aren't necessarily needed to hook everybody up, but they are needed to get to our full production of forty-five million gallons a day. So, that one thirty-two includes enough money to pay back all the states and finish the project.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Todd, from a scheduling perspective, you know, the program's been kind of, been moving out because of lack of funding, right? If by chance, the infrastructure bill is acquired...
Mm-hmm.
Is there any idea of what the schedule would look like to complete the project?
If we're talking about completing the authorized, um, towards our hookup date, our hookup date will likely not change. Uh, you know, it's, it's fall of twenty-one, by the time the money gets programmed, we get projects out, our hookup would likely not change. What could change, um, what could change is some of the deferred projects that I just spoke up with Brad, some of those projects that had, you know, proposed twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight type timeframes.
Those might come in.
Those come, could come up to twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, something like that.
Yeah.
Um, we, we, we had a conversation with the engineering team, Banner and Associates is the engineering team for Lewis and Clark. We had a conversation with them about that, and they thought it could advance some of those projects, uh, two years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, appreciate that.
It, it, it might help out Sibley a little bit, and maybe Madison, South Dakota, but not Sheldon.
Okay.
As far as speed of growth.
Right.
Anything else for Todd? All right. Anything else unrelated to Lewis and Clark?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, North Dakota, Big Bay, yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
All right. Kurt, is there anything you wanna address the council on?
Yeah, just quickly, first of all, that's exciting stuff, Lewis and Clark, getting the funding in place, uh, a big thing for Sheldon, look forward to moving that thing down the road, that's a great, uh, nice work on that. Uh, just a couple of things, big weekend, Labor Day weekend, Sheldon, celebration day after a year removed, I know there's a lot of excitement, and Chantel has done an outstanding job, loading this year's events, um, on the schedule, so we look forward to a good weekend, weather permitting, hopefully it looks perfect, rain chance maybe tomorrow into Friday, we're picking across on that, but a lot of live music, a lot of live entertainment, so we're hoping, uh, get a good turnout for this event, so, don't forget about that. Just a quick recap on stash of cash, last week was the last day to redeem it. Um, a total of a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars was sold of stash of cash, which is great, that, that dollars reimbursed in about forty-five day window. Um, you know, we broke it out and had a little bit different, you know, setup this time to try to accommodate, you know, a number of different businesses this year. We were able, actually, Karen Crawl, who owns the movie theater across the street, sent us a text message ironically today, just thanking the city and SCDC for the way it was set up. They had over thirteen thousand dollars redeemed in their theater. They were talking about amenities in our community and things for kids to do and, you know, stuff to do in our town, and very supportive, and wanted to thank us for that. That's a good injection for them, um, because, you know, movie theaters are, are tough, so, uh, we appreciate their investment, but just want to pass that note along because it is realized by, by our business that are being supported through that, through that , uh, program. So, um, just a quick recap there. Um, how's the assessment process? We held our third and final strategic planning session last week, Wednesday, up here. It was about a three-hour-long session, uh, which was very productive. We split into some small groups, identified potential projects. Iowa State Extension and their team will now go back, and they're gonna compile a report for us, uh, for our future planning needs, which will be exciting, uh, start identifying what some of those projects might be. Anticipate seeing that anywhere from four to six weeks from now. So, um, yeah, it's an exciting project, I, our process. I would say Extension did a great job, I know there's a number of us that are here that were a part of that, um, so, we're excited to see what those projects that are identified and start moving forward on, on a, a tactic, some of those strategies. So, and the last thing I wanted to mention, and Tricia, uh, kind of brought this light, hotel motel tax revenue, uh, you know, last year was a tough year, it impacted, uh, it impacted the hotel, uh, industry dramatically. Um, our last two, or actually, every quarter this year has been uptick as far as revenue collected, uh, which means our hotel industry is coming back and, coming back at a local level, which is, which is great. We're seeing that through our hotel motel tax. If you're driving out throughout weekends and even weekdays, you're seeing the parking lot at Holiday and Express full again, pre-pandemic, which is exciting. Talk about that future hotel project, that, those are good signs to get that thing going, um, as we come out of COVID, material prices start leveling out, start coming back, uh, state, uh, future projects. So, a lot of good things there, um, it's, kind of, we'll be a lot of, what the impacts that we've had, but, uh, anyway, great stuff out of the building, it's awesome to hear about that, and then, yeah, as we recover in our hotel motel tax industry, you know, it's the, uh, travel world, it's, it's good to see all that, so, just want to pass those few things along.
All right, thank you, Kurt. Any questions for Kurt?
Yeah, I do have a question in regards to the, uh, I know that we had a good turnout in regards, or a response to the survey requests for the housing, and how will that information be disseminated into the process, and how long down the road will there be results of that?
The actual survey?
Of the survey results, yeah.
Yeah, so, there were approximately nine hundred surveys. Great, I think the report itself, there were seventy pages, I think seventy-four pages. So all that survey data was already calculated as part of our three-hour...
So it's already been put into the process?
Yeah, it's already been put into it, we evaluated it probably for the first forty-five minutes.
Great, great.
An hour last week. There were some common themes in there that kind of rose to the top, you know, but, uh, so it's already been evaluated.
Great.
So it's already been...
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, then we move on. Scott's out here, Angie, anything you have?
No, thank you. Covered a lot.
Uh, Mike, anything from you?
No, thank you.
Counsel to my left? And to my right? Just a couple of reminders, as far, as far as the annual cleanup week, the flags, the virtual flags are on sale, that ends Tuesday, the fourteenth, so you've got thirteen days left on that. Cleanup will begin then on September twenty. And then the other thing somewhat related to that, the Fire Department and the Northwest Iowa Regional Landfill are hosting a regional household hazardous material trailer that is also scheduled for Tuesday, September fourteenth, from three to six PM. Uh, you have hazardous, it's for households only, no businesses, uh, but you can bring in hazardous materials and they will dispose it for you. Just want to make you aware of that. Final thing would be that election packets are still available, if you are planning to run for one of the offices, currently, uh, that has to be turned in by September sixteenth, so, and you can pick up those forms at the city office. And that's all I have, so a motion to adjourn, or to move into closed session.
I'll make the motion to adjourn into closed session.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Ken.
Hi.
Snyder.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
All right. All right, we are back in open session, after discussion, uh, and at this point, we will entertain a motion to, what the next move is regarding this property.
I will make a motion that we allow the city to continue negotiations on pursual of purchase and sale of the former Budsey's property.
I'll support that motion.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Snyder.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Ken.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
All right. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
And roll call.
Ken.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Snyder.
Hi.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.